All right, get the mic on there. Let's call to order the May 27 Lititz Borough Council Meeting. Mayor?
Yeah, well, welcome everyone. This evening for our invitation, we have Ethan Levin Good is here. He's the chaplain at United Zion Retirement Company, Community. Ethan?
Thank you. May we pray. Heavenly Father, we bow to acknowledge that in you we live and have our being and that your kingdom rules over all. We thank you for our community and the blessings we enjoy today, which flow from a goodly godly heritage. May we ever anchor to those beginnings. Bless these council members and all who serve the people of the Lititz area. We ask your wisdom and guidance for them, along with the rewards and satisfaction that come through serving others. Our prayers for the blessing of God here in Lititz and also upon our nation. And I pray in the name of Christ my Lord, amen.
Amen.
Could you please rise for the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance.
Thank you, Mayor. And I would like to note, Council member Ken Mobley is on virtual right now.
Yes, good evening, Steve.
Right here. Thanks, Ken. Just wanted to confirm you were there. I thought I saw your face up there. All right, first on the agenda is approval of last month's meeting minutes. If everyone got a chance to look at April 29 minutes?
A move to approve, second?
We have a motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. All right, as quickly as we start the meeting, we are going to close the official council meeting as we are opening a, sorry, just caught me off guard there for a minute. We're opening a conditional use hearing. Recorder is here. Thank you for making it tonight. All right, bear with me. I've got some of you have sat through, you're reading this several times this year. The procedure for conditional use hearing before the Lititz Borough Council will be as follows. The applicant will be given the opportunity to present its request to the Borough Council, during which time the council may ask questions of the applicant. Formal rules of evidence will not apply. However, council does reserve the right to limit repetitive, redundant information and questions that have no relevance to the issue at hand. At the conclusion of the applicant's presentation, parties represented by council, if any, will afford the opportunity to ask questions of each witness. Council will then ask additional questions it may have of the witness. After the council asks its questions, any, anyone else present who wishes to ask questions of the applicant will be given the opportunity to do so. Parties opposing the application, if any, will be afforded the opportunity to present testimony. The same procedure will be followed with regard to cross examination of those witnesses. At the conclusion of the hearing, any person who wishes to make a statement on the record may do so. If the statement is to be considered as evidence, statement must be made under oath. The council may or may not make a decision this evening. It is important to remember that everyone is to be afforded a full, fair, and impartial opportunity to present statements either in favor or in opposition to the application. Consequently, your cooperation is requested in allowing all witnesses to make their statements. Individuals may be expressing opinions different than yours and should be afforded the opportunity to do so. Everyone that wishes to make a statement in favor or in opposition to this application before the council will have the opportunity to do so. Do not make statements when you are asking questions of a witness. The opportunity to make statements will come at the conclusion of the testimony in this matter. There is one hearing on the agenda this evening. Identify the parties. I believe Scott and Charity are both here. Elijah, can you read the documents on record?
Yes, I have the proof of publication and the Lititz record. I have the draft planning commission meeting minutes from May 16th where they recommended approval of the application. I have my staff review of the application. And finally, I have the Hames application for the conditional use for demolition of their garage.
Okay. A couple of these things might be redundant. Would you please state for the record whether notice of these hearings were properly advertised?
Yes, it was.
Was the property which is the subject of the zoning application properly posted at least seven days prior to the hearing?
Yes, it was. It was posted on May 8.
Did you timely mail notice of the hearing to the applicant?
Via email.
Members of the board?
Via packet.
All other persons requesting notice?
No, none other requesting notice.
In addition to the above mentioned notice, did you also post a notice to this meeting on the door of the Borough Hall?
Yes, it should still be down there.
Okay. Your team procedural status, party status, right? Bear with me, I'm just scanning down through here. All right, Scott, I'm assuming you're taking because Charity's got her hands full back there. The oath to Scott?
I do.
So, we're here for conditional use approval to remove the and replace the barn that's located at our property at 331 East Main Street. Our proposal would be to replace the garage, which is about 817 square feet with a garage. That's 817 square feet. The main reason for the removal of the garage is the condition. We have a letter from, we outlined it in our summary, and we have a letter from our builder outlining the issues structurally with the garage. The foundation is, is compromised and some of the, well, several of the support structures are compromised at this point. The goal with the reconstruction of the barn would be to move it away from the alley. Right now, it's about two or three feet off the edge of the alley. It doesn't allow for any parking to the rear of the, of the property. So we're kind of at this point limited to on-street parking in front of our house. We would move it about 23 feet away. Our neighbors build a garage 20 feet plus or minus away, which in theory is the size of a parking spot, but till you pull up, the back end of your car is sometimes sticking out in the alley. We want to avoid that. So based on their construction, we decided to move ours just a little bit farther into the, into the, into the yard and give us our some more room. Our lot's 30 feet wide in the back, which would allow for three parking spots, three off-road spots, plus the two garage spots. The other thing it would do is it moves the garage slightly farther away from the floodplain, which is to the rear of our property on the other side of the alley. And then the other main thing we're looking to do is to create a second floor living space out of the, out of the new, the new garage. The existing structure will not allow in any way to construct a second floor living unit with it. It doesn't, it's not structurally sound enough or stable enough to, to allow for that. There's some renderings of pretty close. We haven't gone through final DSs, but we do have drawings from, from our architect that show what that is. The colors may tweak a little bit. We understand we would need to go to the historical committee to get their review of colors and some of the details of the structure. And we're obviously aware of that and open to their suggestions. But that's the, the main outline of our, of our proposal. And obviously, we're open to any of your questions or thoughts on what we're looking to do.
Now, I've driven by, I know your garage well because I drive down that back alley. And I, even without seeing the photos that you've got in here, I can understand there's, it's seen its better years. I think the other thing is there's, on each side of you, I'm looking at the one image here. And I know, probably like 15 or 20 years ago, I think the neighbors to your west built a new garage there. Then the other one, just to your east, just did that two or three years.
Yeah, the last three years, there was a new one. So both sides. And then we tried to look at the, if you see the renderings, the building that we were proposing is, is complimentary, we feel, to what, what they were doing. And it still holds some of the character of the original building with the roof lines are similar to the, to the barn that's there now. And the siding would be generally consistent with, with what that was. Almost all of the siding from the original building has since been replaced with more of a modern pine tongue and groove, which has again started to rot and, and go away. Everything that's close to ground contact is, we're losing that at this point, too. So there's really, as far from a historical standpoint, almost all of it's been, all the siding has almost been replaced. The roof's been replaced. There's been some interior, a couple of beams were put in to try and keep it from having a problem. So.
Yeah, it's, I, you, you stated the other thing I was going to say. The architecture of the new garage looks very consistent with the others down there. And I would say also, we've had similar applicants like this where unfortunately, these older garages.
Yeah.
Are past their prime.
I just can't support that second floor. Like, we're trying to plan ahead, obviously, like with having, like, older kids and, like, my parents who are older, trying to plan ahead for, like, having a place for them to go. And we better adapt that when we realize that can't possibly build up and have any, like, usable, like, finished second floor space.
Other council members, questions, comments?
Um, thank you for your presentation. Just one question about the additional impervious area that you'll be creating.
Sure.
Can you just talk a little bit about that? And if you're taking any measures to mitigate any impacts to Lititz Run, which is pretty close to you, as you said?
Sure, yeah. What we're doing, and it's, this all sort of is, a lot of it's outlined on this one page in our, in our packet, is we're able to, with the removal of the existing garage and a little bit of pavement that's there already, we're sliding the garage back. And we were able to keep it under the 500 square feet that the borough allows with their, with their exemption. So our, our goal would be to stay within that, within that exemption allotment. We know, we understand we would use it all up with this project, but there's not really anything else we have planned to do that would, would be hard surface on our lot. So, so we're trying to work within those guidelines that are, that are set forth.
I have no further questions. Thank you.
Down this way. Any questions?
Just one question. So you'll be able to pull a car in straight to, several cars, and they'll be off of that alleyway?
Correct. Yes. Yeah, we'd have the two garage spaces, which we have now. The, the garage is such that we can't get, Charity can't get her, it's not big enough to get her car in anyway. We can't, it doesn't fit. It's too short. But we'd be able to get both cars in, then we'd have three spots across the back. A normal parking spot, when you go to, like, a shopping center, a Bonburg or something, is typically 10 by, 10 by 20. So we'd have three 10-foot spots across the back. And then we're, like I said, we're giving that extra three feet so we can sort of get that bumper up a little bit farther and keep it off the back of the alley.
Okay. Our neighbor made that statement, like, when we were talking to her about her garage, she said that she wished she would have gone. She has, we have about similar size of car, and hers just, like, if you're coming through the alley fast, like, hers could stick out enough that it could get hit. And she's like, I wish I would have maybe gone a couple of feet or in.
It's going to go a couple of feet further than the one to the east of you?
Yeah.
I guess they're going to say the one to the west is, I think they probably wish they would have went back.
Yeah, yeah.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the garage demolition at 331 East Main Street.
Second?
Your motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, we will close the hearing. Thank you for coming out. And we will reopen the council meeting. Item number 1B, the Lititz Library Summer Reading Program.
I want to invite the children's librarian from Lititz Public Library. I believe you're giving the presentation. I'm sorry, I don't think we've met. If you could give your name and welcome to Borough Council and thank you for your presentation.
Thank you. Karen Payong. I'm the Youth Services Director and also the Assistant Director at the Lititz Public Library. And Julie Myski, who is one of the board members, is also here in attendance. 26 years ago, when we opened our building, we realized more people would visit us and we would also be asked to provide more programs. What we did not realize was how quickly we would become the hub of learning and also the connection to the community. We would like to thank the Lititz Borough and your investments in all that we have done. We wouldn't be able to do this without your help. So what was some of the things that we do that you have helped us with? Well, we have just finished with our storytime programs at the library. We run the indoor storytimes from September until April. And our library has 18 programs per week. This is one of the highest in the state of Pennsylvania. Many libraries are lucky to have that many a month. We have it per week. We also, thanks to COVID, have backyard storytime. That is run in the spring and in the fall. And there's about three of those storytimes that we hold outside per week. And depending on the weather, we may have anywhere from 20 to 40 families outside listening to one of the storytimes. And in fact, this week, we are holding the Last of the Spring Backyard Storytimes. What is next? Well, in less than two weeks, starts the summer reading program. This year's theme is Color Our World. So on the youth end, it is from birth until age 19, but we also have an adult summer reading program. Lancaster County's program will run from June 7th until August the 16th. And on June 7th, which is a Saturday, we will have a kickoff, which is the Touch a Truck program. Lititz Borough will be providing a vacuum truck for our event. So thank you very much for participating in that with us. Why is summer reading so very important for the community? Well, through all the reading programs that we have, the outside programs we bring in, and we also do some of our own programs and activities, this helps prevent summer slide for many of the students. What is summer slide? Well, if we didn't have this, the students would be out, of course, playing and learning, but by not reading and doing activities, they would slide back in the skills that they had learned through the school year. And when they would go back to school in the fall, teachers would have to redo many of the skills that they had. So we are here to help prevent that. Our adults will also have an opportunity to do a summer reading program. And they have programs and activities going on, too, at the library. One of our most popular programs is the outdoor concerts that we hold. Again, thank you, COVID. All the, all the concerts used to be inside where it was hot and all. But the people seem to enjoy being outside in their lawn chairs and on the blankets. All of the resources that we have and our programs are free. Again, they are free. So we invite everyone to stop by the library, not just as a council member, but as a community member, and participate and to just see what we have. We are there to answer any questions that you have. Again, thank you very much for your support in the Lititz Public Library.
Julie, did you have any? Julie, can you come, can you come to the microphone so that our guests who are online can hear you as well? Thank you and welcome.
I just wanted to say thank you again for your support. The library does magnificent things, as you can hear from what Karen had to say. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you both for your time and coming in and keeping us abreast of what you've got going on. And I know as a regular patron of the, of the library, I'm very grateful that you're there. Any other council members have questions or anything? Thank you very much.
All right, moving on to the next item. Ken, I believe you're going to possibly kick this off, the 2024 financial statement with Brown.
Yes. Yes, thank you, Steve. Thank you very much. I'd like to introduce and welcome Scott Henry from Brown Plus. He is here to lead the 2024 financial statement review. He is a 12-year industry veteran. The last eight years has been with Brown Plus, where he is a principal. He specializes in auditing municipalities and nonprofits. Brown Plus serves as the Borough Auditor, and this is their second year Brown Plus has performed the audit. Scott, welcome. Please lead us through the discussion on the 2024 financial statement.
All right. Thank you, Ken. I appreciate the introduction. So as Ken said, I'm Scott Henry. Today, what you have in front of you is a shortened presentation, sort of the highlights of the financial statements. If you were here last year, we still recommend you going through the financial statements, reading through it. It's a lot of great information in there, but I'm not going to go, I'm just going to touch the highlights tonight. I do want to start by thanking Rob, Elijah, Kristen, Waltz Group, their whole team for all their hard work. Audits are never easy, and we just really appreciate all their hard work and dedication to putting everything together and making it as clean and effective as possible. So I'm going to actually start on page two. Just go down one more page. Yep. This is the scope of our audit. So we were engaged to perform an audit of your financial statements, help with the preparation of the financial statements and the DCD with review and approval by management. And then also, we maintain your fixed asset schedule in our software, which is then provided to management at the end of the audit. It's a misnomer with audits that we tie everything down to the penny. What, for a financial statement audit, what we use is a materiality threshold. It's essentially a number that we think financial statement users would care about. We utilize that then for our testing purposes. We do risk-based auditions, looking at the riskier areas of the, of your financial statements, diving into those a little bit deeper. And then also, we review your internal controls. We're not providing an opinion on those internal controls. However, we do review them, and we would let you know if there was any internal control deficiencies along the way. At the bottom, our audit opinion, we were able to issue an unmodified opinion, which is the best opinion that we can give, and essentially says that your financial statements are materially correct and in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. And it's the same opinion that we were able to give last year. You want to flip the next page, Ken? The next page goes over the consolidated statements of net position, also known as a balance sheet. This is on the full accrual basis of accounting, so this may be a little bit different than you review on a monthly basis. This includes all your long-term items, such as your capital assets, your long-term debt, and then your pension and OPEP plans. Just looking at a key, a couple of key items. First, you'll notice that your non-current assets, your capital assets primarily, increased approximately $200,000 from the prior year. This is just due to additions offset somewhat by depreciation, which I'll get into in a minute here. Your non-current liabilities decreased approximately $780,000 from the prior year. This is due to pay down of debt. And then also, you had better returns on your pension plans, which I'll show in a little bit here, just better returns on those investments during the year. Overall, your net position for the governmental activities was about 41% of total liabilities, deferred inflows, and net position. This is approximates what it was last year, about 39%. So your fund balance, your retained earnings stays pretty consistent from year to year. Your business-type activities, which is your utilities, this was approximately 90% of total liabilities, deferred inflows, and net position, which was approximately 88% last year. So again, staying pretty consistent from year to year. If you can go to the next page then, Ken? This is your statement of activities, also known as an income statement. This is also on the full accrual basis of accounting, so revenues are recognized as you earn them, and expenditures are recognized as you receive the goods or the services are provided to you. I'm going to focus on the business-type activities, which is your sewer and water funds. This was pretty consistent from year to year, approximately a 1% increase, I'm sorry, 1% increase in your revenues, which is primarily due to usage, and then a 1% decrease in your expenditures, which again is just due to normal purchases from year to year, but pretty consistent overall. You did have a, a loss of about $200,000 in your business-type activities. That's just primarily due to the transfer to the general fund of the borough due to payments of salaries and so forth that they're paying back for that usage. Do you think of the next page, Ken? This is your balance sheet for your governmental funds. So this is on the modified accrual basis of accounting. So this is what you're used to more seeing on a monthly basis. This does not include your long-term items, such as capital assets, long-term debt, or your pension or OPEP plans. Focusing on your fund balance, you had approximately $8.8 million at the end of the year, or about 88% of liabilities, deferred inflows, and fund balance. This is made up of then four categories then. First, $91,000 was non-spendable related to pre-pays and then also leases. You had approximately $2,000 of restricted, related to this tricentennial fund. And then you had approximately $5.2 million assigned. And then that's assigned for general capital improvements, storm drainage, construction, police contributions, parks, and equipment reserve funds, so your capital projects funds primarily, leaving an unassigned fund balance of about $3.5 million at the end of the year, or about 42% of total fund balance. So a very strong, healthy fund balance at the end of the year. Flipping to the next page, this is your statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance. This is also on the modified accrual basis of accounting. So revenues are primarily recognized as you receive them, and expenditures are primarily received as you pay them. So again, more like, like what you see on a month, monthly basis. Your general fund revenues did decrease approximately $460,000 from the last year. However, that was, they were over budget by $333,000. So you were kind of expecting that decrease in revenue. And the decrease was primarily due to a lot of activity in 2023, your real estate transfer taxes, and then your building permits were significantly up in 2023 due to what's going on in the borough during that time period. Your general fund expenditures then increased approximately $964,000 from the prior year, but they were under budget about $700,000. So again, expecting that increase in expenditures, primarily related to paving. Also, you had some debt that became due during the year that you had to start paying on. And then also, your normally, normal salary increases during the year. I'm actually going then to flip two pages, Ken, to page eight. Starting at the top of page eight, just, this is just looking at your expenditures from year to year for your general fund. We'd just like to see how, if there's any trends there. If you're spending more in one category, you can say you were pretty consistent from year to year. The decreases are only because of starting to pay debt that took some of that expenditure category. Also, some public safety decreased just because of some expenditures that were required in 2023 that did not reoccur in 2024. Then going into the notes to the financial statements, again, there's a lot of good information in there. I'm just going to talk about the most significant ones. First, your capital assets. You had approximately $1.6 million of purchases during the year, which was then offset by depreciation expense of about $2.3 million. The significant purchases or projects that were ongoing in 2024 were the Lititz water upgrades, some vehicle purchases, Front Street Main replacement, Cedar Street and Lincoln Street culvert projects, and then the sewer linings from South Spruce, Cherry Lane, and Cedar. So several projects going on during the year. Your long-term debt then, you can see approximately at the end of the, of 2024, you had approximately $900,000 or $9 million of debt. This is broken out into a GO note of 2020, GO bonds of 2023, and then a revenue fund 2020A note. Those are your, your largest chunks that you're paying off yearly, making normal debt payments. You also have an Axon. It's a lease slash loan for fleet cameras and tasers, which you're paying on as well throughout the year. So again, all those, no significant, new debt in the current year, just paying off debt that was acquired in prior years. And then the last note I'll go over is your pension and OPEP note. OPEP stands for Other Post-Employment Benefits or Health Insurance. This is very significant in your financial statements. You'll see about 20 to 30 pages worth of it, just because of all the actuarial evaluation that goes on, estimations that are required for your pension plans. Again, I have to say, this is a snapshot in time. So you're, you'll get an actuarial valuation. It's as of 12/31/2024. They utilize a lot of estimation, mortality tables, things of that nature. So these can fluctuate pretty significantly over time. But as of 12/31/2024, your police pension, net pension liability actually decreased about $400,000, and your non-uniform pension decreased about $1,000. This is due to great returns on the investments in 2024, as well as your normal contributions that you made during the year. And then last, your other post-employment benefits. You're not funding that. You're just paying it as it goes. Again, the medical insurance to cover your employees. That actually increased about $100,000. But again, that's just due to mortality tables and health insurance rates continuing to rise over the years. Again, those, those are just the main highlights of the financial statements. We highly encourage you to review them, read through them. But does anyone have any questions or anything?
Before questions?
Before questions, Ken, I'll just open it back to you if there's any additional comments you want to make on top of what Scott just shared with us.
Thank you, Steve. Finance has had a chance to review this last week, and we're grateful for the thorough review. We approve it. But at this point, I have no further questions of Scott. He, now I think it's a good time for you and the, and the team to see if y'all have any questions at this point.
Okay, I'll open it up to council members then to the public.
Yes, I have a questions. I'm on the personnel committee, so I'm very interested in our unfunded mandates, like the pension fund and our healthcare, the accrued vacation time and all those kind of things that we are responsible for. Is our, are we in a good position to deal with those in the future? And how should we position ourselves to make sure that we're able to fund and pay out those expenses?
Yep, 100%. So you have two factors there. You have, one, your compensated absences related to vacation and sick time. I'm sorry, I don't have that number offhand, but there was another GASB that actually, that's what you follow. You may have heard of FASB before. Governments have to follow GAVS, GASB. And we implemented that into the current year. We did actually see a significant increase in a lot of our municipalities due to it because of having to accrue for vacation time. You were already accrue, I'm sorry, sick time. You were already accruing a portion of sick time, so that did not actually affect your liability there. You, you, I'm sorry, I wish I had it offhand, but I don't have the amount, but you have significant reserves that you can pay for that. Also, where you stand with your pension plan, I think, is well-funded. We have some municipalities that are a little bit more, some that are a little bit less, obviously, but you saw some good returns on your investment to cover those. Your OPEP liability, your other post-employment benefits, maybe, maybe consider fundraising in the future. We have, it's about 50/50, depending on our municipalities that fund it, just because of how significant that the cost trend goes. If it's worth funding now, or if you just pay as you go. That was a significant GASB pronouncement a few years ago, just to highlight this liability that will come in the future, since you're honoring those employees that work for you and providing them health insurance until I think Medicare aids, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Okay.
Not at this time.
Anyone from the public have questions? I'm going to ask you to stay up here, Scott. There are. David, come on up.
Hi, it's Dave Carson, 220 East Sixth Street. I just have a question. You were going through relatively quickly the revenue and expenses. What's the net number on the general fund for full accrual and modified accrual? I didn't get to the, I didn't get to the point where you shared the net numbers.
And do you start that up? You go up. On the full accrual, sorry, so I can speak into my, on the full accrual basis of accounting for your governmental activities, you had a change in net position of about a deficit of $25,000. And then on the general fund side, you had a change in net position or net income of about $141,000 during the year. You can see it at the bottom there. And then you're, you did have a loss in your capital or in your other governmental funds. Again, this is primarily your capital projects and capital reserves of about $105,000. So you're just utilizing what you, you had in those.
Any other questions, David?
So, well, this, this will be voted on tonight. Will this be available for the public when?
Yep. Dave, we're going to approve this tonight, and then it'll be made to the, available to the public this week on the website as well as in the paper. Okay?
Okay, so the full audit report, or reporters, that's the DCD will be available.
I think it's the.
The full report, Ken.
The full report, yeah.
The paper will have the concise statement online will be the full report.
Right.
So the whole, whole thing.
Yeah, the whole.
Don't need to do it right now and the whole thing is going to be there. Thank you.
David, the report's 86 pages long.
Thanks, David.
I appreciate a person reads the whole thing.
Any other questions from the public? Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you, Steve.
Motion.
Oh, well, we'll, we'll make the motion for that under finance.
Yeah, we'll approve it under finance in the Senate Committee section.
The audit under the finance.
Okay. All right. The next item under presentations will be the continuation and resuming of the public hearing we had last month. I'm going to turn this over to Mary.
Great, thank you. Thank you, everybody, for attending tonight. We are continuing the public hearing for the rezoning petition that we received for the North Walnut Street property. First, I want to ask Mr. Wenger, do you have anything you want to contribute or add to the presentation that you gave last month?
Just one, one correction in an answer I gave you last month.
Okay.
The properties currently zoned R2. So based on your form-based code, we could actually get four sets of duplexes, not three, as stated last month. So slightly different, but just so you know.
Okay, according to the form-based code. Thank you for that clarification or correction. Many of you, I see familiar faces here tonight. Thank you for coming back again, and thank you also to those of you who attended the Planning Commission meeting. I hope that you found that informative. I want to invite first anybody who has not spoken yet to offer any comments or questions that you have. You can come to the microphone. Please give your name and address. You'll have three minutes for your comments. Following comments by anybody who has not presented yet, we'll open the floor for anybody who did present before and has new items that they wish to present or any clarification from your comments previously. I think that captures everything, but.
Unless you want to restrict redundant comments.
Yeah, I'd ask that you please just, if you did make comments on an issue last month, please refrain from reiterating those. We do have your comments, and we have taken careful consideration of those. So I would just ask that you, that you please refrain from repeating yourself, but maybe you don't remember what you said last month, and you need to say it again, and that's fine. So, yeah. So anybody who did not speak last month who would like to speak tonight at this point in time. Okay, any additional comments from people who spoke previously? Yep, come on up and introduce yourself, please, and provide your address. Thank you.
I'm the only one in here with a big mouth. Bob Dar, One Sussex Place, spoke a couple of times last month. Wanted to thank both Jerry and Christie. I don't know if anybody else did, but members come in, looked at the situation. I think you get a better idea of what our problem is, our issue here is when you come back and look. I know, and I'm, Christie, I'm not throwing you under the bus, but how'd you get out when you came to see us? You're turning around in our community. And Jerry, you may have too, correct? And like 50 people a day do. Okay, the point we're trying to make, and I might be redundant here, there is no way out without returning around. Now, imagine a gate, because we may become a gated community. Okay, so if there's a gate there, you have three-point turns going on in the middle of the street. It, just imagine it to be a dead end, because the rest of it is private property. So the more units go in, the more of a situation this is going to be. If it was held to the minimum units, you could then probably put entrance off of Walnut Street. I'm not an engineer, I'm just thinking. Off of Walnut Street and force the people that would be living here to park in the back. Okay, which means they would come back out and go. We know something's going to be built there. They have a right to do that, excuse me. But it has to be done with common sense in that private property is not being used to go in and out. I mean, that, that should be, that shouldn't even be a question. So again, I might be redundant. I'm sure there's other comments out here, but again, thank you for coming and looking. I hope now you understand why we're here. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Bob.
Good evening, everybody. Unfortunately, I couldn't be here.
Can you begin with your name?
I'm sorry.
And your address?
I'm sorry, yes. Yes. My name is Vern Martin, and I live on 22 Sussex Place in Lititz. Unfortunately, I couldn't be here last month because it was my birthday. So now I'm here now.
Happy birthday.
Thank you. I just have one concern that I would like to get some soothing comments on. When you consider, there are probably several hundred people that have to use Walnut Street to exit onto, onto Lincoln. That's a lot of people, and there's only one way. If there were two, if there was another exit to exit our community, I think that would be a nice thing. So I'm just imagining if there was any evacuation necessary. Good grief, how would several hundred people get out of Walnut Street? It really concerns me. If you would have some soothing answers for that, I think it would maybe relieve our concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Vern. I believe this issue did come up at Planning Commission. If you could speak to that, Elijah?
It did. And, excuse me, I will just start by saying that we would not allow a community like yours to be designed today in that way. It was actually part of litigation against the borough, is my understanding. That was dropped in the early 90s. And there is a agreement that would require a connection from Sussex to North Chestnut, if it was ever extended north as a public street. So there's also, if there's need be, possible connection into Cardiff, it looks like there was a stub there at some point in time that probably should have connected. So there are options if it is something that is a serious consideration that is kind of outside the scope of this hearing, because this is a site specific towards this development. I think it is a valid concern, but there are ways, and there would be a significant cost to do that if that is a need. And it's a cost that not only the borough would need to incur, but also the members of the community.
Thank you, Elijah. Okay, yes, please. And again, if you could begin with your name and your address, thank you.
My name is Sherry Miller, and I currently live on 263 Noble Street in Lititz. However, I just purchased a condo at 29 Amberly Way. And one of the reasons that I chose that, that property was that it seemed so quiet and very nice community for somebody that's going into the next phase of their life. And not long after I purchased it, I find that we're going to have more traffic than we currently do. And there is a problem when you go to exit on Walnut Street to Lincoln. And I haven't officially lived there yet, but I'm speaking for some other people that do. And it's a great community, and I hate to see it invaded with more traffic than there already is.
Thank you for your comments.
Mike Steffi, Seven Sussex. Just wanted to correct something that was said last time. When I said about fire trucks being able to get back in our area, I was only using them as size, not with fire protection, because we could go anywhere and put fires out. So I wanted to correct that. That was nothing what I meant. I was just trying to lies, you know, size it up. The other thing is, there's four sides to the property. Is that correct? That in question?
Yes.
It's, I mean, it's a rectangle, so.
And it's on Walnut Street.
Okay, so on Broad Street, what is the zoning on Broad Street?
The part that's still the church?
Yeah.
It's R2 as well as the petition parcel.
And on West Lincoln, what's the zoning on that side?
R2.
So you, the comment made last time was you just want to shape it up the same as it's zoned back where we are, correct?
So.
If I'm understanding it right, you said you just want to make it what we are.
So this is a petition for this one specific parcel. The future land use map that was adopted in the comp plan actually recommends that the zoning be expanded from your community to West Lincoln, to the homestead apartments, to capture all of the area, including this parcel that has been developed at an RA standard in the past and is not currently zoned RA.
Right. But why can't it, can, why can't it stay what the two sides are? And we only have to worry about the other two sides. Can it stay R2? Because half of the property is R2, correct?
Everything is R2, and the applicant is specifically requesting this change for this one parcel. But Planning Commission has been discussing a further rezoning.
Said you just want to make it what we are, to, to firm it up what, what we're zoned at, what we are currently.
The request for the rezoning is to change this subject tract from R2 to RA, which is what Sussex, Amberly, and Cardiff is currently zoned.
What Broad Street and West Lincoln are R2.
Right now, but Planning Commission is making efforts to change that.
To high density on Broad Street and West Lincoln?
Yes. And that's what's on this future land use map here.
And Elijah, is that to, so that the development that exists matches the zoning
Correct.
Of the, the style of development. So in other words, the development that's there is not consistent with our zoning ordinance or the map. It is, in fact, development that matches the RA zone, not the R2 zone.
And everything's been okay for the last 25 years, whether it was zoned the way it was? Or is there problems? Has there been problems? That you're changing it?
We've found a number of problems that we correct over time. When we find issues that need to be corrected, we do that. We've had issues with different ordinances, street ordinances, things like that. So as we find these things, we try to correct them. Yes.
So the, and also, you talked about making that road through our area, Elijah?
Yeah, so there is.
Be a cost to the taxpayers, not the person putting the development in?
So if there is an agreement going back to when your development was done, that if the road has ever extended north from Cargill and the Public Works, that you are required to connect into it, and that would be a cost for you. The road would be either the boroughs, or if Cargill ever develops the northern part of their lot, that would also be a time where that would come into play.
Why would we change that street?
Because there was another neighbor that was just saying that they had concerns about access during an emergency.
With the new development?
So there's no discussion of changing it with the new development?
So that's not the reason that we're here? Because of the new develop, the new parcel?
The new parcel is, the new parcel is requesting the rezoning to be changed to RA. There's no change proposed with the roads from your community. It will still be a single entrance from North Walnut into your community. What I was bringing up was the historic agreement that if that other road, which I believe is called North Chestnut, which goes between the Public Works garage and Cargill, is ever extended north, the HOA is required to connect to it, to provide a secondary exit.
Correct. So has any problems come up in the past, the last three, four, five years?
What kind of problems are you referring to?
To make the street what you're talking about?
All he's saying, that was on record years ago.
That's not my question.
We're not saying.
Why would you spend all this money when nothing's been a problem until now?
We're not, and we're not, we're not saying that would happen. We're saying if there was ever a need to, he was just saying there is an easement that it could go through.
it could go through. He's not saying this plan's proposing it. We're proposing it. He's just saying a land development plan approved years ago allowed it if it were ever requested or needed. We're not saying it's needed now.
And the taxpayers would have to foot that bill.
If the road was extended, it'd be the taxpayer or it'd be if Cargill would develop the northern part of their lot, it could be required during then too. But we have no plans for that. I was just merely commenting to Mr. Martin's comments about exit.
Just that it's there, there's an easement there. We're not saying it's part of this at all.
Okay, I just want to get that figured out. Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
I'm Emma George at 51 West Lincoln Ave. As it's been remarked, there simply isn't enough parking capacity to support a new development. We were told last month of the expansion of yellow lines on West Lincoln, which will result in the loss of four parking spaces on that street. This would naturally push cars to the side streets. At the conclusion of my remarks, I can share a photo of a typical weeknight showing North Walnut full of cars, standard for both that street and West Lincoln. Additionally, I was told by a borough official that the council has never gone against the Planning Commission. Our neighborhood has already fallen victim to the unchallenged wisdom of past planning when it was recommended to demolish softball fields and a stand of trees bordering the south side of West Lincoln. And their place are now the apartments at Liddit Springs and a storage facility. The corner of Lidditz with, north of West Lincoln and west of Broad Street has no public park. The North Walnut parcel is hemmed in by two busy state routes, West Lincoln and North Broad, both with heavy traffic use, including trucks. If this green space disappears, so does our neighborhood's last accessible open space. Sure, you can drive to other parks and other parts of Lidditz, but if you're a parent home by 5:30 with just 30 minutes before the routine of dinner, homework and bed comes, then being able to walk to a nearby green space is essential so that you can spend those few precious moments with your family. Also, not everybody can drive. Walkability is a matter of equity and accessibility. Just last week, I stood at Lincoln and Broad and watched a semi truck turn too tightly, getting stuck on those black metal bulbs cemented to the sidewalk. There was no room on the sidewalk. What if a kid was walking or biking by to find an accessible green space and had been at the corner? An example of what sending people out of the neighborhood to access green space could result in. I urge you to vote no on the proposed rezoning. And beyond that, I would challenge both the council and the developer to explore alternatives, including the possibility of the borough purchasing the land to preserve it as a green space. There is still time to choose a different path, ensuring that all corners of Lidditz, including ours, have access to accessible and safe green space and not just for the lucky ones.
Anybody else?
Hi, Reid Dame, 51 West Lincoln Ave. At last month's meeting, a member of the council said fewer restrictions could be placed on development because of the concept of private property. This represents a fundamental misunderstanding of zoning, which by its nature entails restrictions on private property. The very reason we have zoning and why we're all here tonight is to balance individual desires with the community good, which inherently means restricting absolute private property rights. To suggest the council cannot uphold the existing zoning limits, which were known to the developer when it purchased a slot, indicates a rejection of the very principles of zoning and is dismissive of this process and the council's authority. The primary responsibility of the council should be to maintain and improve the standard of living for people who live in Lidditz today, not hypothetical future residents, rather than compromise our quality of life by forcing high-density developments where they don't make sense. Finally, I would like to address the notion of plans and recommendations. Neither the 2030 Comprehensive Plan, which by the way, the developer's consultant also consulted on and was paid for by the borough, nor the recommendations from the Planning Commission require and cannot legally require you to approve this zoning change. To suggest that these recommendations require you to, to require you to approve it would be usurping your authority. I would like to acknowledge Mr. Lee was absolutely correct last month to focus on the differences between the existing R2 zoning and proposed RA zoning. R2, which much of West Lincoln consists of, permits semi-detached, AKA twins. RA permits condos, apartments and townhomes, which are not permitted under current R2 zoning. The meeting minutes of the April 1st Planning Commission states that per the consultant, quote, "shared the owner has been interested in developing the North Walnut tract for apartments since purchase." As admitted to me by the planning meeting last week, there is nothing legally or contractually binding the developer to a townhome plan rather than a 26-unit apartment building if this zoning change is approved. Therefore, if you do not think increased density, including potential apartments or condos the developer was recently considering are appropriate for this lot, you should not vote for this proposed zoning change. Thank you for your time.
Last call.
Mary, if there's any more comments here, I would just ask, I was whispering Rob's here earlier, I was just asked him pull up the zoning map, just so everybody in the audience, assuming all council looked at it, I just wanted to make sure everybody was, first of all, zoom in, Rob, on the area we're talking and just so everybody's aware. Keep going. Oh, I want to see, no, no, I'm not zooming in, zoom out a little so I can see the, the darker red so we can see what we're talking about, not that far out. Yeah, I just wanted to see for reference to a couple of things. I mean, so that is the only area, that's the, bear with me, the RA, the dark red that the cursor's on right now is the RA. And then all of the lighter red is the R2. So just for reference purposes, too, within the entire borough, we have, I believe, four areas that are zoned RA. So we have that area we're talking about right now. Over that little sliver that I think is where, is that where Locust and Water merges, I believe?
That's where, no, it's, it's west of that. So it's where Lincoln and Water.
Okay, I just know there's a funky intersection where they'll, and if you zoom out, I think there's also another RA down where we did the Keller Road Track behind Turkey Hill, believe. And then also the, the development across the street from 6th Street is also RA, correct? Zoom in, Rob, to that area, that other dark red area. So those two areas are where we have, those are the only three areas. And Penwick, that's up, kind of not contiguous, not as contiguous within the rest of the borough. So those are the only three areas that we have within the borough that currently are zoned RA. All right, I just wanted to, I want everybody there and also council to have that visual. So I think what is also being proposed, it's not, it's not a spot, what people in land development were called spot zoning, that it's out in the middle of some agricultural, we're just going to make that R2.
Yeah, so, forgive me while I read. "The comprehensive plan adopted by council in September 2024 after over a year of engagement, admittedly not perfect engagement, and not what I would have liked to have seen had I been involved at the time. Public deliberation, including public hearing here and deliberation at the Planning Commission meetings. That comprehensive plan serves as a long-range policy document, providing a vision and framework for decision-makers. It was adopted unanimously by this borough council. One of the key elements of the comprehensive plan is the future land use map, which outlines the specific vision for the future of the land within the borough. When a petition is made to rezone land in the borough, we consider its consistency with the comprehensive plan and more specifically the future land use map. In this case, the subject petition is consistent with both. And in fact, council had already charged the Planning Commission with preparing a zoning map amendment, which would include this parcel of land and the surrounding area. And we have a copy of that future land use map over here for reference. The Planning Commission began discussing this amendment in October of 2024, and those discussions have continued each month since, and we anticipated their recommendation to arrive before council very soon. Their approach has been very thoughtful and addresses many of the concerns raised during this public hearing. Furthermore, the one resounding concern we heard from the community during development of the comprehensive plan was the lack of affordable housing. And while we cannot guarantee that any new housing will resolve the housing crisis being experienced here and across the nation, we have a duty to do what we can, which in this case is to allow more flexibility in terms of housing types and density, and to do our best to ensure that new development is in keeping with the character of the adjacent development. The concerns you've raised during the public hearing pertaining to issues of parking, green space, landscaping and access are governed by the subdivision and land development ordinance. And should the rezoning petition be approved tonight, there will be additional opportunity for input on how the site is developed. With all of this in mind, and having given serious consideration to the applicant's petition and the concerns raised, I hereby move that the application for rezoning of the subject parcel be approved."
Second.
Is there opportunity for discussion here?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Me. We have a motion second on table in favor of approval.
Discussion? Yeah, thank you. So I guess one of the reasons for looking at this was to be consistent with some of the other zoning in the, in the borough, as move this toward being more consistent with some of the other zoning requirements of the borough, correct?
It is, as I stated, to bring our zoning map into consistency with existing zoning and to allow for development in places that it meets the goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan.
Yeah. So, so that's the other piece, meet the goals, objectives of the plan. And then the other one has to do with potential of affordability.
That's correct. Which is consistent with the comprehensive plan. That was one of the key priorities of the comprehensive plan.
Yeah, it's hard for me to, to envision this being affordable. The market's going to dictate what kind of rents or what kind of costs will be in the housing. So I'm not sure the affordability issue is one to put our hat on at this point. We have, we have in the borough some properties that people can afford. We have a couple of properties that are subsidized. So the borough has responded to those needs as well. So I, I don't think the affordability issue is one that makes, makes sense for this, this parcel. I struggle with knowing that the comprehensive plan and the Planning Commission, the zoning, has moved forward with this, but I agree with the speaker, we do have the ability to, to not follow that. But, but, but I struggle with, with knowing that we approved those things and now we're at this point. The other struggle I have is that I've spoken with a lot of residents and there does, doesn't seem to be a lot of support for the change of the, of the zoning. And I need to respect what the, what the citizens are saying. So that's my comment.
The one thing I'll just add to that, Jerry, as Mary spoke, you know, we have the comp plan. You're trying to recall the different roles. Are you, you sit on the Planning Commission meetings? I thought so. So the challenge will be upon the council, the Planning Commission and you two to find those areas within the borough. I hate to say, we can't always just say no to all of them unless we're just going to not follow the plan. So it'll need to happen at some point, some location that meets all the criteria within. And I think the only thing I was looking at, and I wanted to make sure everybody had that visual, the zoning, the three and the four that's off there, I'll really just say three within the borough that have it, is looking at where those would be ideal. I remember when we went through the rezoning years ago, Elijah, where the Wilbur Apartments are now, because that had to go through a lot of rezoning to allow what was happening there. And I know there's mixed opinions on exactly what happened there, at least with the existing building. I think it was a very positive result of what could be a vacant building there, but it was a lot of rezoning and thought that went into that to allow that to happen. So I would just challenge everybody that we, as you look at this, whether you're in favor or opposed, the comp plan is done for a reason. And the thing is, we have to make sure we're following through with that. And unfortunately, wherever it's going to be, it's probably not going to be the most favorable, because it'll be a change from what was there before. And I would be opposed to seeing what I was referring to as spot zoning, where we just pop a high density right in the middle of, somewhere where it's not. But I do hear you, I appreciate those comments. Go ahead, Ken.
Well, first off, I, I just really appreciate the discussion from everybody, our residents, the, the different committees, Dirk and Edson, and it's been a great discussion, eye-opening for me. And, and I took your challenge last week to try to look at the, the two zonings and compare them. And, and I don't think it's necessarily automatic that the property owner's gonna try to achieve a high density. I think what I saw is that the, the zoning gives flexibility, and yes, higher density is part of that, but it's also flexibility for the property owner to, to put something that's appropriate for that space. And I believe Dirk and Edson and this, they're an excellent local firm, has heard and will hear the input of our residents for congestion, for green space and things of that nature. So I, I think this is a wonderful process. You know, committees have provided their expertise that comes to us, but I also think it goes back to committee and it allows for local residents to attend the Planning Commission and give their valuable feedback to help with this final plan.
Jim, can you come up to the mic just, I got one question I want to clarify from my notes last month? Correct me if I'm wrong, I'm trying to compare it to what you just shared this month. I had last month, R2 would be six duplexes, three sets of two. If it's RA, it could be 10 to 11 townhome, correct?
Correct. It's actually, it can be four sets of duplexes, so it could be eight units, plus they could really do accessory units in the garages. So you're really talking double that number potentially.
Right. What I'm trying to do, the math in my head, based on that, maybe you can help me with this, is trying to understand the number of people versus what it's zoned right now would equate to, or even cars. I'm, I'm trying to make sure, because right now you could do the six, I'm sorry, the number duplexes you just said. So that would equate to how many?
It, it would be eight duplexes, which will probably be three bedrooms, or 10 townhouses, which would likely be two bedrooms. So you're actually gaining more bedrooms, more people if it's duplexes than if it's townhouses.
Yeah, that's the math that I'm trying to go through here. And I'm trying to say from number of people, from what you can do right now, regardless of what we say tonight, and then trying to do it to people and do it to cars. And I don't know whether you can do in your head roughly, it could be this many people if it's currently zoning this many people. Can you do that math in your head quicker than I'm trying to do right now?
Not going to go there.
And I just want, I just want all of us to know that. And I just want, I just want all of us to know that it's going to be a change. And I know high density is the term that's being, people are using. It's, I would like to know it's this to this, or is it this to this? And my assumption, from what I just heard from the numbers there, it's not going to be, it's not quadrupling it. It's not. It's not even doubling.
It's maybe one or two more units than.
Yeah, and I just want everybody to know, everybody to know that if in the zoning, they can do right now, there's a number of duplexes, which is still going to be, you know, a number of people and a number of cars, and we can't stop that. And it's really, if it's only going up to 10, 11 more townhomes, it's not, and again, with the number of bedrooms, it's not going to be adding that many more people. And the thing is, from a parking perspective, you're going to have to have enough parking to cover, whether it's RA or R2.
Parking and store water are the two real limiting factors, the number of units.
Yeah.
Which is really why an apartment building does not work well, because it requires too many parking spaces.
Right.
It's only an acre. It's not that big.
All right. Well, I just, thank you. I just wanted to clarify as I was looking at my numbers from last. Just wait one moment, just because we have a motion. Go ahead. This is discussion based on the motion here. Sorry, we just got to follow procedure. Any other discussion specifically on the motion?
Yes. And I love Lititz. I really do. And I have to say that this entire process to me has played out exactly as it's supposed to. Not one person who's been involved in the comprehensive plan, not one person who's been involved in the planning commission, not one person who has been at any of these meetings. Do I have any doubt that what they want is the best thing for Lititz and for Lititz to continue to be the wonderful, thriving and fantastic place that it is? So I'm so appreciative of everyone's time and everyone who has had any input whatsoever in this discussion and in this process as it's played out over these past couple of years. But I would like to delve into a little bit more about this specific issue that you went up, because when I went to see the area and tour it and see my friends over there and got to see exactly what we're talking about. And what we have now is technically high density buildings within an R2 district. So one subject of the conversation is to correct that and to rezone that so that is that those buildings that are already there are in keeping with the defined, the definitions of the zoning laws and the R2 and the RA zoning. But it does seem that we have built those in a way that adds some additional complexities, i.e. that road dead ending there essentially into those complexes and causing a difficulty in how to get through. Mr. Martin spoke to that too. And how do we, how do we get through in the event that something drastic should happen? So right now it's a matter of turning around. And unfortunately, the way those townhouses were built back there, it's just so inviting to drive right in and turn right around. And that's not fair to the people who live there who pay for the maintenance of those particular parking lots and those areas and things like that. So the one concern that I've had from the get-go is the number of cars that are going to be there, regardless of how many units are built. Americans have a tendency now to have approximately two and a half cars per household. That's just, that's just the way that we are now. And as much as we provide for a wonderful community that is walkable, that people can walk to our wonderful park and our wonderful downtown and things like that, people still just prefer to drive to a lot of places, so they have these cars. So I'd like to delve into a little bit more about this and look at these zonings a little bit closer to say, how many cars are we possibly going to have? Just as you started to get into, because to me, that's that's a big deal. And we are already losing, just because we are looking at this, we're already having to look at the exit from Walnut Street onto Lincoln Avenue. We're already going to be losing some parking spaces on Lincoln Avenue. We know that. And the resident Emma was right, where are they going to park? They're going to go to Walnut Street. So I think we could possibly have a little bit further conversation about, and I know this will come up at the planning commission meeting, once they go forward with whatever zoning they have and whatever design building they're going to build, that we will get into the complexities of what is the parking going to look like for these new community? What is the road structure going to look like around it? Are there going to be an alley behind it? All those things are going to come into play, but I'd like to just delve into this a little bit more about exactly how potential, how many cars we could have.
Well, I think you can take the number that Jim, let's just stick with the current zoning, the R2 zoning. And I believe Jim said eight.
We have eight with three bedrooms. We're definitely going to have our two and a half or eight. And Jim was correct that if there are garages there, they would have the opportunity to build an accessory dwelling potentially. We're not saying that's going to happen, but if there's an option for that, because that is currently allowed under that zoning. And if we switch to the RA zoning, we're talking about 10 condos of two bedrooms.
Right. That's kind of the math I was going through in my head, that it's not, they're going to be smaller units because they're going to be in the townhomes versus duplexes to have less, sorry, have more bedrooms. So that's where I was trying to get. You're going to get a similar number of people. How many of them have cars? I can't predict, but if you want to use your two and a half math, going to be pretty darned close to the same number of cars. I just, I'm just answering her question.
Yes.
I'm just answering her question and trying to rationalize exactly, you know, the number of people and the number of cars. You know, if you're doing the math you were just saying, again, if you took the eight times the two and a half car, you know, you've got 10 and a half there. So, but you've got the three bedrooms. So yeah, I'm not going to loosely try to do this math, but I just want, that was the logic I brought to wanger up to rationalize in my head and the number of people and the cars. It's not a, they're both very similar density. I think the difference, as I noted last month, was, you know, the one allows apartment.
Could I ask staff to speak to the parking would, under the subdivision and land development ordinance, parking would have to be provided on-site, correct?
Yes.
And there is a traffic impact consideration that must be looked at during the land development process as well, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I will say that it does allow off-street, or excuse me, on-street parking if it's allowed in front, depending on the lot frontage.
Okay.
Rob, do me one more favor. Bring that visual back up. I'm just a visual guy. I want to make sure. I was just having a sidebar conversation here with Chris, just to correct one thing she was, she noted in her statement. The current, which most of the residents here that are in opposition, they live in the RA zoning. They live in what's being defined by some as high density. It is, they zoom in there, Rob. So they, that, they are in the, those are the comments, in the RA zone. And then if you go down, there's that apartment complex that everybody referred to right there that is currently developed as RA, even though it's in the R2. That I believe I heard Mary say, there's been discussions of rezoning that. So what's on the table is rezoning, what's right across the street from that, and having that whole area, the dark red RA.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you.
Any more questions or comments about the motion on hand?
Yeah, just so, just to piggyback on that a little bit. So we went from last month, six units to now eight units. And, but then we could have a potential, if I do recall from last month, 12 to 15 units, could go that long, no? So there's no chance at all?
My notes are you could have eight duplexes in the current zoning. That's the current zoning.
Four units.
Eight, or it's four duplexes.
Eight units, four duplexes.
And then in the RA, my notes from last month, and Jim can correct me if I'm wrong, had, it could be anywhere from 10 to 11 townhomes. It's rezoned to the.
And that would be the maximum it can have on it.
Go ahead, Jim.
Yeah. Please do.
So currently at R2, under your form-based code, we can go down to 30 foot width lots. The property is roughly 300 feet long, not quite 300 feet. So we could get four duplexes and a single. So we could get nine units or go to townhouses and get 10, maybe 11. We're not interested in apartment building because frankly, we know it doesn't fit scale-wise with the neighborhood. That's not what we're looking for, even though folks have made that comment.
Jim, what you just said, you could get, are you saying with the new zoning or the current zoning? What you just said.
The current zoning, it would be four sets.
And one.
And a single potentially. So it could be nine, or it could be 10 or 11 townhouses. And we have room to actually put an alley along the north side and bring it around the backside. So the people don't need to turn around in the adjacent development. The problem is the current people on the west side of North Walnut, because they like to park right in front of their units. They're really the problem in the long run with turning around. We should be able to provide a way to move people back around and not have them turning around in the adjacent property, but that's really a subdivision issue, not a zoning.
That's what I was just going to say, just so everybody knows. I mean, that stuff we can control during the subdivision, zoning or proposed zoning, we can control that through our SALDO and control exactly the flow of the traffic, the amount of parking, how the parking enters, exits. We could, that is all next step. That's in the SALDO, control all of that.
Helpful. Yep. Yes.
Hold on, just let's keep, I want to make sure we follow procedure here. And if there's any other comments with the motion on the table.
I just was writing, taking some notes here. So I just, again, I just want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. Last month's, all your concerns and voicing your concerns. I mean, again, it's clear this community cares deeply about maintaining a character of Lititz. And I want you to know that your input's heard. And it's not only just heard, it matters. And I feel that we need development that works with our community, not against it. So I just appreciate everybody coming out tonight.
All right. Any further comments on the motion that's on the table? Nothing?
I'm just not certain that I'm prepared to vote on this tonight, at this second, not that I'm not prepared to vote on it tonight. I want to make sure that I have an understanding from the community members who have spoken, that they're fully understanding all these complexities and that I'm not sure what I'm asking, but I want to make sure that everyone understands that what's being asked of us. That what it comes down to is there's not, really, there's not a huge difference. And I came prepared tonight to vote. I honestly did, but I'm second guessing myself because of the complexities of the current zoning appearing to allow more than what the new zoning, they would build under the new zoning.
And just understand, it's not more units. It's, they would have, based on the build, they could have more people.
You've got 10 two-bedroom condos or eight three-bedroom duplexes. Plus potentially a garage.
They could do now.
On what they could do now. Sounds to me like they could have more people in the current zoning than what they are looking at doing in the new zoning.
Well, again, some of that comes down to the architectural design.
Correct.
We don't have that before us now. This is simply change in the zoning.
The three bedrooms could mean three people, three cars.
Right.
Or more.
Right. Okay. Any other questions or comments regarding the motion that's on the table?
Call for the question.
What's that?
Call for the question. People are ready to vote.
Yeah, that's, I'm just making sure everyone's got their comments. Okay. So we currently have a motion on the table and a second. So I'm going to call a roll call to go ahead and ask for who's in favor. Who's, those in favor, roll call.
Aye.
Do you want me to call names or do you want to have them?
You call names.
Gaddis.
Aye.
Meck.
No.
Lee.
Aye.
Sensenig.
No.
Carpenter.
No.
Moberly.
Aye.
Three in favor, three opposed. It goes to the mayor.
I knew this was going to happen tonight.
This is the one and only time I think it's ever happened there that I recall.
And it, and I've been thinking about this and I, first of all, I am really looking at the parking issue and the the units and the fact that the duplexes, as you said, Jim, am I correct here? That if they had a duplex, it would be a possibility of putting a garage behind it. Is that correct? And I'm looking at it in regard to if you're looking at 10 units of the apartments, I think you would have more room to have an alley and get that circular way to get in and out. I think that would be the way to go. So I am voting yes in regard to the motion.
That is a, with the mayor's, it's a four to three, motion is approved.
I just want to again, say thank you to everybody. I know you don't want to hear this. I've been in your position. I've had things not go my way. Please pay attention during the land development process. Jim, I encourage you to reach out to the neighbors, involve them in your process privately, perhaps host a community charrette there with the neighbors. We'd be happy to make space here to make that possible.
Let's.
All right. Thank you.
That. Mr. Della, please, as Mary said, a lot of that honestly is not what this is for in the land development. And I welcome, what I'm saying is they will be forced to come up with something as they're working with that. And I ask you, again, I would love for this room to be full for the planning commissioners, they go through each of those steps, because there is, I say there's even more detailed and a lot of the comments that were made tonight that will come up in SALDO, which is the land development ordinance, this is zoning ordinance. A lot of that stuff of landscaping and buffers and parking and traffic flow, all of that stuff will be talked in detail during those meetings. So that is really where a lot of, I'll say more the visual aspects and a lot of the things tonight from parks, all that stuff starts to come up in that process. So please all come and I don't know how to notify them when that comes up, but I mean, they'll get notifications, I think, when that starts.
We'll put out things on our Facebook. We'll try to get the word out. And the earliest, I don't know where Jim's at, but the earliest we would even consider it would be August for planning commission. And Jim's shaking his head no, so we're probably looking at the fall.
Okay. All right. Let's continue on here, folks. Let's get on to item number two, the ordinances, the zoning map petition.
So that was, you guys just voted on that?
Yes. Item number three, resolution for the Parks Committee expansion. Who's taking this one? I gotta pull up my. Jerry? Nope. Bear with me.
He should have a hard copy there.
I've got it here. If you need me to read it or. I've got it here, if you need me to read it or. Uh, this is resolution number one zero zero five, a resolution celebrating the Lititz Borough Parks Committee and expanding its membership, whereas the council of Lititz. Of the Borough of Lititz created the Parks Committee on March twenty eighth nineteen eighty nine. To create an opportunity for citizens to advise council on the maintenance and development needs of the borough's parks. Whereas the original Parks Committee was folded into the Greenway and Trail Feasibility Study Committee and worked under that guise until such time as the committee was dissolved. Whereas council reestablished the Parks Committee as a recommending body to council on February twenty eighth two thousand six. And appointed its first citizen member on August twenty ninth two thousand six. Whereas since that time, the Lititz Borough Parks Committee has provided invaluable service to the borough. While providing opportunities for citizen volunteers to guide council on the borough's recreational needs. Whereas citizen interest in the committee has grown beyond the traditional five appointed members. Now therefore be it resolved that by the council of the Borough of Lititz, Lancaster County, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. That the Borough Parks Committee is reaffirmed and the committee is expanded to seven appointed members.
I have a, oh, I have a question, is now the, the time for my?
Yeah, absolutely.
So are there any provisions about how many members will be council members versus public?
Not at this point.
There, so there are not, I know Steve served on Parks Committee in the past, and that was something that we decided to move away from. There will be obviously a council member liaison under Buildings and Grounds. But at this point, there is not a specific council member appointed, so this would, these would be citizen appointees.
And one of the goals of expanding it was to involve some more citizens on the committee.
Okay, so with our other committees, members of council serve on committees for a large part. I'm just trying to understand the difference between our different committees and.
Is that, is the Parks a, a committee or a commission?
It's a committee, it's, it's essentially a citizen advisory committee is the, the point.
Okay.
Planning commission zoning don't have council on them either. The committees that you're thinking of are the council kind of subcommittees that oversees, the relevant subcommittee for this one is Buildings and Grounds.
Thank you for that clarification. Thank you.
I have a, a note here from the chair of the Parks Committee saying that she supports the resolution. And she values creating space for increased engagement of the commi- committee, uh, community members. And Scott was here, he's on the committee, was prepared to say something, but he's left, so we have support for making this change. So I, can I make a motion to accept the resolution as written?
I'm waiting for.
I'll make a motion to accept the resolution as written.
Second. We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion approved.
Was that Tanea or Chris that seconded?
Me.
Thank you.
And Ken, if you want to add him.
Well, I heard Ken, but I heard one of you two first, so I'll give it to you.
Yeah, it was Tanea.
All right, moving on to agreement five seventy-three fluoride data sharing, my guess is that must be Ken.
Yeah, hey, thank you, thanks Steve, I got this, uh, this was brought up earlier this season and gave, uh, we paused on this one. Because we wanted to have a little deeper dive in understanding what measurements of fluoride was, was to be had. So Mary and I did some follow up with InfraMark and. We found out that they measure fluoride in milligrams per liter and they do that monthly. And the samples are taken as the water leaves the water treatment plant. And we've, uh, InfraMark uses that particular data point just to make sure that the levels are properly administered. And so forth before it goes to the public. So that's the one data point, they're asking for it on a monthly basis over, uh, the September first of twenty twenty four through August thirty first of twenty twenty five, and it's a. It's a memo of understanding, which after our, our follow up and vetting, I think Mary and I are comfortable moving forward.
I'll move that we adopt the agreement, the memorandum of understanding between the coalition, Coalition for Oral Health and Lititz Borough.
Second.
Second. We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion approved, thank you, Ken. All right, moving into council members forum, Ken, you're first up with your InfraMark report.
Let's handle InfraMark first, and Doug, I can't see you, but I think.
He's here.
Um, not a whole lot going on this month, uh, last month, so I'll start off with finances, um, for last month, we were two thousand five hundred forty seven dollars under budget for the month. And fifty four thousand five hundred over year to date. And again, that's due to higher operating expenses due to sludge for the, from the colder months. Far as capital projects go, uh, the final twenty twenty four capital project is finally going to be completed. On June sixth, which is the well, well, three at the water plant should be, will be installed. The rebuilding of the high service pump is currently underway. The plant flow meter replacements are almost done, we're waiting for two more parts and they should be done by the end of the week. The LED conversion at the water plant is complete, well, all the LED lights are installed in all the, all the rooms. And then the furnace at the water plant died earlier this year. Obso- the furnace itself was obsolete, uh, they can't get parts for it. So I had, had some discussions with Rob about replacing that, one of the other projects, which was the intermediate high service pump VFD SCADA programming. It's not a high priority, uh, and I would like to replace. That capital project with a replacement of the furnace before the cold weather months hit. We're currently in the process of getting some quotes, but it looks like we'll be able to do it for the same amount that was budgeted for the SCADA project. Any questions on that? I know that was a, kind of a.
I know you said that deferring the SCADA project is not significant, but what does that mean? Can you explain what SCADA is and?
SCADA is the, is the computer system that controls the water plant and ideally what we were going to try and do is. Uh, get it programmed so that the pumps run based on how much demand there is. So that way the plant can run twenty-four seven instead of shutting down at night when there's less, uh, when there's less demand. The reason for that is because every time the plant shuts down, uh, DEP requires us to do backwashes of the filters. Which could take approximately forty-five thousand gallons, so the whole idea of that was to save water. Since DEP is pretty much directing us to do it that way, it's not really a priority as far as compliance goes, uh, just, it would just be saving water.
Thank you for that explanation.
Sure. Um, moving on to the wastewater plant, uh, the aerobic digester blower rebuild is currently in progress. And then one of the items on the capital project list, the nitrogen internal return check valve repair has been pushed back from quarter three to quarter four. And that's mainly due to weather concerns, and we're also going to be doing the, um. One of the other projects in concert with that, since we have to drain the, uh, drain the tanks. Uh, both plants were in compliance, uh, the wastewater plant average daily flow was two point eight million gallons a day, which is up nine percent from the previous month. And the waste, uh, the water plant was one point seven nine million gallons a day, which is down two percent from the previous month. Um, we had three emergency callouts at the wastewater plant, uh, all three were for a influent pump check valve. Which is probably dirty, uh, that's going to be cleaned and serviced when we replace that, um, that pump, which is scheduled for next month. That's pretty much it, unless you have questions.
Any questions from council? Thank you, Doug.
I'll get those, uh, those quotes probably, on the furnace, probably next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doug, I'd like to make a motion to approve the water treatment and wastewater rep- uh, plant report from InfraMark for the month of April.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion approved, thank you.
Steve, we had a couple highlights from the water sewer meeting, and that is the USA EPA has announced new regulations for surrounding the PFOS and PFO. Chemicals, it's basically a delay, there's no direct, uh, uh, impact to Lititz, uh, as our testing levels are still well below the four parts per trillion. InfraMark will continue to monitor and test as directed by the Pennsylvania DEP. The final two things is, uh, capital projects, we have two completed as of this, as this point of the year, and all the projects are on schedule, except for what was just updated by Doug. Lititz Borough Authority did not meet, our next meeting is in July, and Mary, did you have anything to add from MS four?
I do, just real quickly, but first, before that, I want to just mention the water service line inventory that's underway. I received my letter last week and reported my information to the borough. I just want to call the public's attention to the fact that we are under a federal mandate to identify the material of all of the water service lines. In people's homes, so that we can make a plan to have the, in, any lead or galvanized lines replaced in order to. Reduce the potential for lead poisoning. So I just want to call people's attention to that and ask that people please. Respond to the letters that they received, and if you have any questions about that, I think you can call Rob. Um, and then real quick, just a couple of stormwater items. In our stormwater committee, we have recently been addressing historic infrastructure issues, so. People doing a little bit of work in their yard and uncovering pipes that they didn't know were there, this has become a, um. An issue for us as we try to have good documentation of our entire stormwater system. So just one of the issues that we're dealing with, the street sweeper has been out of service. For a while, my understanding it was going to be back in service, it is back in service, yay! So the street sweeper can go to the library for the touch a truck event, okay? And then my final thing is just a reminder to avoid dumping debris. Garden debris, yard waste, limbs and such, um, down storm inlets. Into waterways or ditches, we've had occurrences of backup nuisance flooding in areas because people have disposed of debris. In our streams, creeks, waterways, ditches, um, also if you have stormwater facilities on your property, you need to make sure that those are. Maintained in their appropriate condition, and then the final thing is, um. What is the final thing, Elijah? I think that's it.
I'm, yeah, I'm not sure what you were thinking.
That's enough for tonight, thank you.
Great.
Oh, quick, is it the sweeper or the vac that's going to the touch a truck?
The vac truck is going to touch truck.
I thought so, that's a funner one, I'm glad that was going, so I wish they could see it in action, that's, that's a good one.
Oh, I know what my final thing was, if you notice a storm inlet in your neighborhood that has debris on it. Grab a bucket and a rake and go out and clean it out for us, we try to keep those cleaned, but when they get blocked up and we have rain like we're supposed to have tomorrow, it can cause flooding. So help our public works crew out, get out there with a rake and a, and a bucket if you can. And help us keep our storm drains clean, thank you.
All right, Tanea, streets and traffic.
Okay. Uh, first one on my agenda is North Sturgis Lane Cafe Lights, so council, if you recall last month, we got a request from the owner of Maine Men. To place the cafe lighting across North Sturgis Lane. He's going to pay for electricity, has the landlord's approval, um, lights are going to be installed, not to interfere with traffic, liability insurance is provided. And I know, Mary, you had just a couple of issues, but you went out and met with Mr. Moore.
I did, I met with, um, Mr. Moore and we looked at the situation and my main concern was just. Light in the residences that are right there and any impacts, he assured me that the lights would be, I think, turned off at midnight, I think was what he said. But he, um, he addressed that to my satisfaction and I, I think it's a good plan they have.
And Deputy Fire Commissioner, you wanted, you were talking about last month that you wanted approval upon. That any approval be contingent upon Wesk's review, is that, that was again for the heights because of your emergency vehicles trying to get through, okay. Anybody else have questions, any other counsel, can we say that, that we approve it upon Wesk?
Absolutely.
Okay, okay. So no questions? All right, I'd like to make a motion to approve the. The North Sturgis Cafe Lights contingent upon Wesk's review and approval of the installation, second.
Aye.
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 Okay. All right, next on my agenda is this Sixth Street, so. I just wanted to mention to council that the Sixth Street traffic study was just. Received and given to you guys last Friday, so it's a fairly lengthy. Document, so I just ask all council to review that, you can ask me any questions or Elijah, if you had any tonight, or just review over that.
I would definitely say, I mean, if you've never studied, read a traffic study before, and unfortunately I have. It, there's a lot of complicated, so definitely if you have a question, because there are recommendations in there.
Right.
A lot of stuff in there, uh, that is going to come before us sometime soon, so make sure you understand that now and not when it eventually comes before us with some of the proposed solution.
Right. I just wanted to, to just put that in front of you to make sure you're, are able to review that. And then once that's approved, then we will release that report to the public. And then, one, one thing I do want to mention about this report is that the Kissel Hill Road and East Sixth Street intersection by the library was not. Included in this traffic study because it's jointly, it's between the borough and the Warwick Township, so they've got to discuss. Potential improvement scenarios for that, so that's, that part is not included in this, in this study.
Where officially is the border, is it literally right in the middle of Kissel Hill Road?
Yes.
Lovely. Okay.
Yes. And they did do a traffic study, or a signal warrant study a few years ago, and it was found not to be warranted, um, but I did let, uh, Tanea know that. It is requested right now for county funding on the twenty-seven tip. So that's something that if we are supportive of that, that's something we can always reach out and let the county know. I'm not sure if they're expecting a contribution from us, uh, for that local match or not, it's essentially just a.
I'll be more curious, I mean, there's a lot of different proposals at other various intersections, you know. Think something's going to need to be consistent there, but, so how are we going to approach this, is there going to have to be their traffic engineer and our traffic engineer, we're going to have to pay half for them to jointly study that intersection?
So right now it is essentially just a request for, their request is for funding in the future for a traffic signal. We have been reviewing the crash data at that intersection because of recent crashes. It does seem to be going on to the level where a four-way stop may be warranted. Um, but that would take a traffic study, and I have reached out to Brian last week to see if they would be interested in splitting that cost.
Okay.
Um, but that was on, I think, late Thursday, and I haven't heard back from them, so.
Okay.
Um, and I just wanted to mention too. We did ask chief to gather data on that, on these incidents. Because there is state requirements for requesting the traffic study, um, it has to have at least five or more crashes, must occur at the intersection within twelve month period. Chief checked into that and found six in the last six months. Five are in the borough and one was in township. So. He answered most of the other, other issues, that's where we're kind of at with that. Do we have anybody that?
Yeah, Dave, if you want to come on up?
Yeah.
Dave or Dave?
Yeah.
Thank you, my name is Dave Hilbert, I live at six twenty-four Kissel Hill Road in Lititz. I've been there for fifty-five years and I keep coming here and asking and asking to do something about the speed on that street. And nothing has been done. Now I have some pictures here, and there was Julie was up a little earlier, and was it Kathy that was with you or the other lady from the lib- And was it Kathy that was with you or the other lady from the library? And she was espousing as to how many children, groups of 40 families coming there. I'm one of them. I bring my great grandchildren over there. Five accidents. There was this one on the 20th on a Sunday, three cars. I bet there was $100,000 worth of damage to those cars there. Some of them I think are going to be totaled. Fortunately, nobody was taken away in an ambulance. These things keep happening. Nothing's done. People come down that hill at 47 mile an hour. I have a sign there that the police put in across the street from me. So I can go out there and I can watch when it's coming down at 47 mile an hour. Other ones, 42, 37, 32. We're not getting any help. I don't know how many traffic violations there's been on that road that have been prosecuted. Haven't heard that. But now we got to get serious because children and the safety of our families are involved here. We apparently have enough accidents happening at that intersection to warrant something. I was here nine months ago, asked about the traffic studies that were going to be done. I heard they were going to be done. And here, one of the most important intersections has been taken out of the study because the township owns half the road. Why don't we buy it from them? What's 20 feet, for goodness gracious? Let's us own it and be done with this. Or we'll sell it to them, you know? But let's do something and not always go back that the state says this, the state says that. We live here in this borough and you make the borough rules and you guide us. So let's have some of that guidance. I have that study that was done back in 23. I think it was done 323 by the township. It was a manual study, didn't put anything across the road or anything like that. They had people standing at each corner and they'd count the cars as go in there. And that was accepted by the state then and said, no, we don't need a traffic light there. I'm just asking for four stop signs. Now, things have progressed. The road has, may we go on or not?
Continue.
Thank you. The road is open. It's all the way through, all the way through to the high school now. It's never been advertised that I saw in the Lititz paper that it's open and ready to go. But there was a study done on that end of it, but when they were doing that study, they didn't do with anything over in Kissel Hill Road and Sixth Street. So we got to get this done, and I think you have the power to do it right now based on safety to put a four-way stop in that intersection now. Take a call to the township if you want and say, hey, do you agree with that? I will pay for the darn stop signs if that's what it takes. You take care of the labor. I'm not doing that. Getting too old for that. But I need something to be done. Now I have some pictures here. I'll pass them down along the line. This first picture is a rear of one of the cars. Here it shows a fashion of work. Here's an image. This one I took back in January of 24. 24, it was just about 3 o'clock in the afternoon, January 11. Here's a car, quite a family back of a library, set there out of the rain. Here's a jet car that went into the trailer where there's a sewer impediment there, sewer. Then a car fashioned into that was thrown probably 60, 70, 80 feet into the trailer. Please do some.
Dave, I'll, I'll say first of all, I, I agree. I, I've been in favor of a four-way stop there just because it is, I, I watch, I live, keep going down the hill. I live around Main Street, but that's the way I come home from anywhere south. So I, I agree. Elijah, I mean, we have the traffic study now. I know we don't have the study of that specific intersection, but I do know this unfortunately does go back to the state. It's, we can't just put stop signs where we want to put stop signs, correct?
Correct. They have to go through a warrant analysis. It'll be a few thousand dollars. I did talk with Jay States who is our traffic engineer. The accidents do seem to indicate, the only thing that he cautioned is that the site distance requirements are actually very good there. You can't use stop signs to regulate speed. That's the unfortunate.
No, but you can, the safety of individuals.
Correct.
You can slow the speed.
Well, I think.
That they are safe.
So, but when you're doing the signal warrant analysis, you have to follow certain state mandated things because there are other places people put, and Chief and I talked about it even here. Some of the stop signs in the borough were put up without the traffic study and were not necessarily enforceable.
So let me just ask, I mean, first of all, I, trust me, I would love to, if I could go out there, I, I would do the labor if you bought out. Kidding. But I, I want to, I mean, I, I just, I travel out of road a lot. So I do watch. Again, it's not necessarily this, it is the speed because the people are coming down the hill or going so fast. And if somebody looking up the hill and thinking, wow, I think I can make it, I think I can make it, usually can't. I mean, I've been at Sixth Street and trying to take a left to go down towards my house, and it's pretty interesting. So I, I do, trust me, I do understand your concerns. Just trying to understand what we can and cannot do, or what, what steps would we need to do? So it sounds like we have the accidents, unfortunately, that kind of warrant it. So do we have to submit an application to the state?
We can request Jay to do the study. So there would be a cost to it. It's not a huge cost. The only thing that he cautioned was there are factors that would not immediately make it like he could say, yes, you're going to get a four-way stop.
Unfortunately, you might pay to have the study and.
And find that at this point in time, everything combined isn't going to lead to a four-way stop. But we, if counsel is willing, we can, I can tell them tomorrow to begin the study.
I don't know if we needed.
You need a motion on that?
Motion or take a vote on that. But I mean, I'm voicing my, I, I agree. I mean, I've, I've been, I've been waiting for the traffic study that we just got on Friday, but.
So without Rob looking at the budget, it would probably be good to have a motion. That way, if it's not budgeted, we, you can, we can expend funds on it. We probably have money somewhere where we could do it, but it would probably be better to have that motion.
And are we waiting though to see if we can get, I mean, would it be worth waiting till a few days to see if we can get township to pay for half?
We can always just tell the township that we're paying for it, and if they want to be part of it, they can chip in if that's how counsel wants to approach it.
Yeah, I, I agree. I mean, this has been going on a long time, and I brought that up to counsel for, that this was, this day was coming, once those intersections.
Well, in pursuing this, excuse me, in pursuing this, I have talked with the borough or the township folks too, from time to time. And I know with this one study that, that was done back in 23, there was another study that was supposed to be done in this intersection of Kissel Hill Road and that. And it was decided by the township not to make them go through that again because the developer didn't want to be involved in having to perhaps put a traffic light in there.
Yeah, they, they would have had to have done a traffic study when they did that whole development. So that's probably what you saw them out there doing, the, the manual counts.
Yeah, well, that was a manual count, and the whole thing wasn't all the way open then. It was just a little bit, that one road coming. It didn't go all the way through down to the roundabout.
Don't they usually have to do a post-development analysis also?
They do. And if I'm not mistaken, they did it when the north side development was done, but before the south side one was complete and before the road was open fully.
Okay. Well, we'll have that conversation with the township also.
Can anything be done, chief, to slow the traffic down with other kind of signages or other kind of technique?
Like he's, he's got this speed sign out there. Yeah, come on up. Yeah.
Yes, please.
Yeah, that, that speed sign doesn't slow anybody down. I mean, it really doesn't. And there, there was to be a sign, sign actually on my side of the property, the poles there, the holder. But that was taken and put up on Sixth Street. So maybe we ought to get that thing back. And put at least the sign there if it does. I, I've never seen it.
In my opinion, I don't know whether it's necessarily going to slow them down. If I know I'm stopping 100 yards in front of me, I'm going to, I got to slow down to stop.
Yeah.
Ultimately, that's the only way you're going to get, and it's not necessarily, you got to get, even if somebody's coming down that hill at a speed and somebody comes down, they're going to get hit.
But I, my suggestion to you is don't let stalls loose off the hook if in the future it, it's found out that the borough has to put in a traffic light there. That's going to be very expensive. So I.
Elijah will talk to the township about what the developer still has to do.
And it, it, it would be nice to hear back as things are unfolding, okay? Instead of having to come to the meeting, if he could pick up the phone and let me know how it's going. Maybe I could call my Congresswoman and fee, I guess it is, and maybe she can get the ball rolling if we need to. Let me know. I'll help you any way I can.
I appreciate. I do think that if the engineer does the warrant analysis and shows it is warranted, so they're looking at things like accidents and sight distance and things along those, then it's pretty much, you have that, then you can put it up, but you need that justification before you can put it up.
So let, let me, I want to hear from Jared.
One more minute. I do have that 23 study, and in there are pictures showing sight distances and that. Believe me, you can't see as clearly as those pictures showed. More trees have to be trimmed again in that area. There's one right on the very corner. Tree limbs are just hanging down toward the ground, you know?
It's.
You can't see up the hill.
I think it's even beyond just the, it's like.
Your turn.
It's the judgment of people sitting there at that.
Thank you, Dave.
Stoplight, waiting to see if I can jump out before that guy comes down the hill.
Yeah, as far as the crash data, I'll, I'll speak to the five crashes within the last six months that occurred within the borough. So all five crashes are what are considered a reportable crash. And what the state defines as a reportable crash is a crash that results in either injury or fatality to a person or damage to the vehicle to the extent in which it cannot be driven from the scene under its own power. So basically, it needs to be towed away. So these are your more severe crashes that people would customarily define as being severe, not your fender benders. So all five of the crashes at that intersection that were investigated by us were classified as reportable crashes. So significant damage resulting in towing and/or an injury, no fatalities. I looked at the, the primary contributing factor to all five of those crashes. And in all five crashes, it's a similar pattern. It's a driver stopping at the stop sign and then proceeding into the intersection without clearance. Essentially, what they're doing is they're stopping. There's a car going north or south on Kissel Hill Road. They're pulling out from that stop sign and they're driving into the path of that car or that car strikes them. So all five crashes follow a very similar pattern.
I'd like to, again, hear others' thoughts, but I, I would like to, we've got the data now. Unfortunately, we have the accidents now that show, that could allow us to potentially get the approval to do something, but looking to see if anybody has a motion. Go ahead and have.
I make a motion to request a traffic study at the intersection of Sixth Street and Kissel Hill.
Second.
There was second, sorry, motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion approved. David, come on up.
Dave Carson, 220 East Sixth Street. My, my, unfortunately, we discussed this back in 2022, 2023. People came to you and said there's going to be issues with the development that you put in on Sixth Street. Now, it were two years later and you're recognizing the issues that were brought up. Maybe not directly from what he's saying, but the traffic is there. But at that point in time, that council didn't want to hear it. So they went ahead. Now there was more risk. What he just said, five accidents, we live down the street from that, reportable accidents, injury and major damage. So I understand, hopefully this council members that are here will have more foresight before they start doing things with development. Seems kind of crazy to me. You want to do a traffic study if you just did a major development on Sixth and Locust Street two years ago. So I'm not going to point fingers. I think you knew who you are and voted for that. So I think it was a dereliction of duty, and hopefully the council going forward will have some consideration for the safety of the residents. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, David. Anything else on that topic?
Nope.
Move on.
All right. Going to go to down there. Okay, I've got one special event. The good old Lititz Rotary Club Craft Show. It's going to be August 9th, which is starting from 5:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. It's going to be on Broad Street, Main and from Oak to Front Street. About 10,000 people coming. There is no parking. Going to be on Broad and Main. Now, chief, they, they will pay for those to bag all the meters. I didn't see, it says, our parking meters needed to be bagged. They're closing, I don't have to. So then we don't have to, we don't bag. Nobody pays for that. They do?
In the past, we just closed the road, made sure the cars were moved before the event started. Guess I defer to counsel if they want to condition the approval upon paying the, the average daily income of the parking meters. To my knowledge, I don't know that that was ever imposed as a condition in the past, but certainly conversation.
I know we had talked about it a little bit, about enforcing that a little bit more. Maybe we do that with the new procedure of the special events application going forward.
That would be subject, a subject that would be considered into any redesigning of special event applications, et cetera, to define how those costs are captured or recovered.
Right.
Through the approval process.
And that's something I think we're possibly maybe next month you'd be willing to speak on.
Sure. Yeah, Mike Smith and I have been brainstorming, coming up with some conceptual themes of it. Certainly, I think in another month, maybe two.
Okay.
We'd be in a good position to present it.
Okay, okay. That was just my one question.
Okay.
Thank you. All right. So this is a special event, the only one we have. I'd like to make a motion, unless anybody else has any questions. Make a motion to approve the craft show on August 9th. Second?
Your motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion approved.
All right. I've got three activity permits. First one is the 2025 Warrior Twilight Tune-Up. It is August 23rd from 5:00 p.m. to 10:30 p.m. Going to be at the Warwick Middle School District Fields. Put on by the Warwick Cross, Warwick Cross County or Cross Country Parent Association. And they're going to be doing 3K races in the dark with DJ music, food trucks. Sounds like a good time. All right. Next one I've got is the End of the Summer Block Party. That is going to be for the, on August 30th of 2025, starting from 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. It's going to be the 200 block of Swathmore Drive. And they're going to need that road closed. It's just an end of summer block party for the neighborhood. All right. Last one is the Kobe's Bike and Hike. That is put on September 7th from 12:30 in the afternoon until 4:30. It's put on by the Lititz Church of the Brethren. It's going to be walking through downtown and then a 10 or 25-mile bike ride. All right. That's the three activity permits. Anybody have any questions?
I have a question about the bike and hike. I'm just curious. Do you happen to know where they're going to be starting the bike portion of that and how that might impact? That's a lot of bikes potentially in one location. I'm just wondering.
There's about 300 people attending.
Yeah.
I'm trying to look if it's, if it says exactly where it's, I mean, it's the Lititz Church of the Brethren. Okay, yeah, sure.
Thank you. You might as well just stay up there, Jared.
Really?
So the, the information that was submitted with the activity permit is that it would be a walk through downtown Lititz and then a 10 or 20-mile bike ride. So I, I read that to mean that the bike ride obviously would be outside of the borough, intending to do 10 or so miles. That would be difficult unless you're doing circles. So they had indicated a walk through downtown.
That's the part that's only going to really be an issue of the downtown area.
Correct. I mean, I'm sorry.
I think Mary's issue was more of 300 bikes pedaling through downtown.
Well, through downtown or even starting downtown, where are they? Yeah, well, through downtown or even starting downtown, where are they planning to congregate? So I guess it would just be a suggestion that we follow up to clarify where they plan to congregate, um, launch from their route and just make sure that we're prepared for any traffic implications around their logistics in town.
And, and they've done this event in the past and, and we've communicated with them and, and offered assistance, but I, if if it's the direction, I, I can certainly follow up with the event organizer tonight and just firm up some of those details so that we're prepared for whatever impact might result.
Yeah, I don't think it's going to affect my vote on this, but I just wanted to make sure that we're aware of the impact and prepared for those, so, thank you.
Okay. All right, those three activity permits. Um, no other questions? I'd like to make a motion for the Warrior Twilight Tune-Up, the End of the Summer Block Party, and then the Kobe's Bike and Hike.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed and approved.
All right, one last one. I have the, the advertisement of the Streets and Traffic Ordinance Amendment. So we made an amendment, a couple amendments through, um, the Streets and Traffic Ordinance. Council received this document. There's some, the highlighted issues are the ones that we're what we want to advertise to change. I'll just go through them briefly. Um, parking prohibited from three o'clock. Now, it changes to six. What was it before?
I believe it was five. So a lot of these are looking to be what's on the meters. And the one, and one thing to note too is, um, just the addition of the election day, which is not currently in the ordinance, but it's posted on the meters.
Okay, okay. And then you'll see wheels should be twelve inches from the curb. Um, parking tickets have to have, be paid within five days of the notice. And there's also going to be parking tickets for school bus zones. They added and during leaf pickup periods. And I wonder, I did want to ask you one question, Elijah, the, um, the last one here about the trailers, a special vehicle parking. When it says that any unattached trailer as defined in the Pennsylvania Motor Vehicle Code, so if I've got a trailer and it's sitting out front because I want to put sticks in it for a day, not, not allowed.
Should, I'll defer to the chief, but my understanding is it should be attached to a vehicle.
Okay. Well, but.
You're the expert, I'm not going to overstep my bounds.
So a lot of this is just marrying up, um, process to what's in the ordinance, uh, you know, for example, the ordinance had a set of times that parking was restricted in front of the park. The ordinance had one span of time, but, uh, the, the parking tickets had a different span of time indicated. So it, it's just a matter of making sure that, that if we're going to take enforcement action, that there's legitimacy to it, that it does match up with what's adopted in ordinance, so that there's no discrepancies. So it's a lot of the cleaning up of, of the ordinance to match how things have progressed over time.
Okay.
And then, um, yeah, so it's, it's really nothing big or new in the sense, it's just making sure that we're cleaning up some of these, these administrative and, and, uh, wording issues within the ordinance.
Okay.
So, yeah, currently, um, to answer the question specifically to the trailer, um, it would be proposed that it's unattached trailers. Uh, because there's always question as to the enforcement piece, whether it was tacked or unattached. This would clean up the ordinance to match what the practice is.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody have any questions about the amendments? All right, I'd like to make a motion to advertise the changes to the Streets and Traffic Ordinance of C six, six fifteen.
Second.
Yeah, motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion approved.
All right, I'm done.
All right, Ken, back over to you on finance. You got two items on here.
Yeah, thank you, Steve. We have two items. First is the approval of the twenty-twenty-four audit as presented by, uh, Brown Plus tonight. Any, uh, further questions from our council members?
I think everyone get their questions earlier.
Okay, I move to approve the twenty-twenty-four audit and financial statements as presented by Brown Plus.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion approved.
Second item of business is, is to have council look over the financial statements and, um, that we have, uh, in front of them. Uh, you'll notice that for the month of May, uh, we, revenue outpaced our expenses and that caught us up for year-to-date. Uh, year-to-date revenue exceeds a year-to-date expenses. We're about where we were expected to be. Any questions?
No questions here, Ken.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the financial statement and pay all invoices, please.
Second.
The motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion approved. Thank you.
Steve, uh, finance met on Friday, just a couple highlights to share. Um, we, uh, had been notified by our electricity broker that our electric rates for the borough will be going up. Um, we have multiple accounts, uh, of electricity, and so what we're doing is we're asking the, uh, the broker to, uh, give us some options on hedging some of the, uh, accounts and fixing some of the accounts. We see money-saving opportunities and, uh, we also like to leverage the strength of, of the broker that's watching it day to day. Um, also, we did receive, all departments submitted their cost-saving ideas and we are busy looking at how we can save some money for the general fund and we'll be back to the public and council in July with some of those, uh, opportunities. We also, um, had reviewed the scorecard of capital request and, uh, we're looking at how we might fund these critical, uh, funding areas, so we're ready for budget time. And we have looked at, uh, alternative funding. Uh, one is from Univest. Uh, they are a private firm that provides financial solutions to municipalities, including equipment, financing and leasing, uh, and other specialized programs. So we're looking at some of the options there, so we're ready for you when budget season comes around. Um, thank you.
Thank you, Ken. All right, moving on, uh, Jerry, anything on personnel?
Uh, no report.
Right, uh, planning, Chris?
Nothing to report.
Mary, zoning?
No report.
Building and grounds, Ken?
Well, we, um, we did approve an expansion of the, of the, uh, the park committee, and then I'll defer to my colleague Elijah. Elijah, any, anything to report in my absence?
Uh, I'd just like to report that the public meeting, sort of the parks committee meeting for, uh, May was held at a new street park. We had a great turnout. There was probably, I'd say between twenty-five and thirty neighbors there with their kids. Uh, Jordan is still going through the notes and suggestions. We did a walking tour of the parks, so there's a, a lot of kind of free-form discussion that happened. Um, we'll summarize that, give it to the parks committee for consideration for budgeting. Um, and it was such a hit that, uh, the chairman of the parks committee would like to do the same thing at Spruce Street. So the June sixteenth Parks Committee meeting will be at Spruce Street, and then we'll probably try to go through the rest of the parks before budget season.
Okay. Thank you.
Look, look forward to attending. Thank you.
All right, uh, Mary, regional plan?
Uh, no report unless Elijah has anything on.
I'll just say that, uh, Planning Commission did vote, uh, to recommend the, uh, text amendment for the RA district, which was what their concerns were before bringing the zoning map forward. Uh, that was sent over to Mike Davis at the beginning of the month. Um, and I'm still waiting for feedback on that before we put it on the agenda for advertisement, because there's a few things that they're trying to do um, that are a little bit innovative. Uh, their main concern is they don't want to see someone buy a one-acre tract like the one we discussed tonight and put a single house on it. So there's, there's some restrictions over, um, making sure that there's a, a range of uses and not just putting a single house. Um, there's also things to form apartment buildings so that they fit better into the context.
So that's going to be the proposed map they're having for rezoning that we were referring to earlier.
So the, the map amendment is pretty clear-cut because it's what's in the future land use map.
Okay.
So there wasn't any kind of discussion for the map amendment portion. Uh, there was discussion about the text of the RA district. Uh, so they made some proposed amendments to that. And then as always, whenever we look at the zoning ordinance, there's probably about five pages of housekeeping.
Yep.
Along with it, so we send that over to Mike Davis and he's reviewing that now.
All right.
Thank you, Elijah.
All right, moving on, report from the borough engineer. You have that in your packet. Uh, Scott is no longer here. Report from the mayor.
A no report.
Chief? You have the reports from Elijah and Rob. Elijah, anything you want to share further from your report?
Uh, covered the two of the four. Um, still waiting on NS for the construction agreement for the runabout line. Uh, the historic parcels from the rec center have been recorded. So now DMA is able to do the, uh, land swap with the Moravian Church to get the right of way for the runabout line. Um, last item is just an update on the toy soldier. Uh, we've gotten a few questions about that. They did receive an extension from zoning hearing board this month. Um, part of their sale agreement was that all, uh, permits and approvals are in hand before they have to close on the property. Uh, as of today, their liquor license is still pending transfer.
Oh.
So that's.
The longest planned submission.
My understanding is that, um, the Department of Ag certification for the property lapsed. You're not able to transfer a liquor license without a Department of Ag certification, so they had to reestablish that, which took several months, um, and it's still in, in process at PLCB.
Amazing, okay. Rob, anything more you want to add from your report?
Um, yeah, just, uh, one thing to add, um, as you all know, the, the Borough Hall HVC has, uh, been ordered, uh, for this year. Um, it's completely done for the, uh, where the offices are at. So you'll see window units like by the copier and our offices and whatnot. Uh, but just for your indication, if you're going to use the conference room, there's nothing in there for air conditioning, if so, as it, as it gets warmer out in your scheduling meetings, just so you know. Uh, you can use this space, which is air-conditioned, uh, but not the conference room. That's it.
All right. Nothing else? Um, public comments? Does anybody have any questions, comments, thoughts on anything that was not discussed tonight? Okay? If not, one last thing on the agenda?
Uh, um, we have one online. Um, I can read it for you.
Um, ask, well, stick with what we've had there before, maybe. Who is it?
It's, it's Linda Carson. Uh, it's about the engineer report and why tax payer does not have access to borough report.
Elijah, do we make the borough engineer reports public?
We have it in the past, no, but they're, they're a public document, so that's ultimately up to council, um, and it's always something that could be requested via right-to-know.
Go through those different, I mean, there's nothing, it's usually all the plans they reviewed for the month or whatever. All right. There's no other public comments?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Your motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion approved. Thank you.
I told.